Board President Ty Alper.
Present.
And Board Director Julie Sinai.
Here.
All right.
Um, so I think what in reviewing the agenda. For folks, we're going to. Sorry. Um. We have the minutes to the meet to the last meetings that need to be approved. And then we'll have the public comment after that. Director or President Alper, I wasn't at, I wasn't on the subcommittee at the time. So I, but I don't think I can abstain. Is that right?
Are you talking about approving the minutes?
Approving the minutes.
Yeah, you actually, I looked this up a while ago. You can approve minutes for me, but you weren't at.
Okay, and I don't think I can abstain because then I don't think they'd pass.
Yeah, so I think you.
All right, so do you want to, do you want to move approval of the minutes?
I will, but hold on, I think before, we need to approve the agenda. And I want, and I think we want to, we're taking off. Two of the items, right? John, we're taking off Longfellow Middle School and, and number three, 6.3 Construction Management.
Yeah, I believe we were actually going to table all other conversations with the exception of workforce housing this evening. Just to allow to give that its due time.
Okay, you don't need.
So are you doing a projects update?
I actually table, I, it was my understanding from our earlier conversations to table that as well, to give us enough time here.
Okay.
I can, I can give you a projects update if you would like.
What do you think, President Alper?
Well, why don't we, we could, we could put it at the end if we have time, if we got to it.
Does that work for you, John?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the agenda, just so that for the public who is attending, we are going to. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda. That will include. Workforce housing after public comment, and then if we have time, we'll do a project update.
Yeah, and then, and then, sorry, Director Sinai, there's the one other like tweak I think we were gonna make to the public comment was that. Well, now they're only, if anyone is here for public comment for something other than workforce housing, we were gonna do that first, then have, then start the item. I think have the presentation from. Deep Mar and then have public comment.
Are we gonna do Deep Mar and RCD and then do public comment?
I thought it was Deep Mar, public comment, and then RCD, I don't know, what do you think? Should we just have a public comment and then Deep Mar and then RCD?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So attendees who are interested in doing public comment, if you could hit the raise hand button now so that we can see how many people. Are hoping to speak, we can get a sense of how much time we have.
And in the meantime, I'll, I'll move to approve that the agenda with those changes.
Okay, and. I'll second it, all in favor?
All right.
All right. That passes, I passes, okay, so the minutes have been approved, so now we will open it up for.
That was approving the agenda, I'll, I'll move to.
All right.
That's right, I'll move to approve the minutes too.
All right, okay, I'll second it, all in my favor.
Bye.
Bye, okay, minutes are now approved as well, sorry about that. All right, so right now we have. Three people, four people, I'll wait another minute. But I think actually what we want to do is public comment that is not related to workforce housing first, or do we want to just go ahead and mix it up? It's four people.
Let's just mix it up, and if we could call on.
Who's the teacher?
Is it Vivy Mage? I think has to go to Berkeley High.
Genevieve, Genevieve Mage? Okay, so let's put her first because she has to go to Berkeley High Open House.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, good evening, my name is Vivy Mage, I teach English at Berkeley High, I'm about to go to Open House. I'm here to talk about the housing, my rent in Berkeley was raised at the beginning of 2020 to $2,400. That was not for a two bedroom, by the way, that rent is for a 100 year old studio apartment in a fourplex, and that was with rent control. My take home after deductions last year was 3,400. If I was living alone, that would mean that I was left with 1,000 to get me through the rest of the month, and that does not include utilities. Fortunately, I have a spouse who can split rent, but we have to eat, we need heating. By the fifth of the month, I'm left with less than 1,500, and that is assuming that I am only taking care of myself. This assumes I have no children, no elderly dependents, no other concerns. This does not include my student loan debt I accrued specifically to be able to get this job. Teachers move further away from Berkeley as they seek out more affordable housing, and it doesn't take them long to realize that they might as well just teach in the city in which they live. My partner and I moved to Oakland in August. Nationally, but especially here, teacher turnover is outrageously high, anywhere between 20 to 50% of new teachers quit within the first five years. How do you think that status changed during COVID? I'm in my fifth year, by the way. With high teacher turnover, new teachers don't get proper training because of the lack of veteran teacher support. While students struggle to absorb content from freshly indebted ineffective teachers a year off from leaving the profession. Our salary is already a joke, with unaffordable housing aside from sheer altruism, I don't know what arguments you have to keep teachers like us. Especially if a tech company 30 minutes away is willing to pay me six figures to do the same job but for adults. Altruism does not pay bills. The only way that you are going to be able to keep trained veteran teachers like me, so that we can do the priceless work that we do for our community, is to compensate us. That means a livable salary, but that also means affordable living in the community that you want us to care for. Creating affordable housing is an investment, and it will keep teachers for the long term benefit for everyone. So please make that smart investment, please make that long term investment, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Genevieve, I neglected to say that a public comment for our committee structure is usually two minutes. I'm not sure how long that was, but just for folks moving forward, we're gonna do two minutes. So our next speaker is Roderick Caraway.
Hello, thank you, and I'm here to speak on behalf as a classified employee. Before I get started, I thank you, Ty, for your eloquent presentation last night. At the meeting with the schools reopening, really appreciate it, let me go. I've been in the district 25 years, I started out as a custodian. And. The first few years I was on public transportation. And I find it, it's challenging because I'm a product of second generation Berkeley Unified School District employee. My dad was the head custodian at Malcolm Max for over 30 years. And the whole time that he worked in the district, I grew up in Berkeley on Virginia Street. Now, I've been here for 25 years, five different positions, and I've never been able to afford to live. In the city or be a part of the community that I love, that I grew up in, which is Berkeley. So this housing is very much needed by the teachers, for teacher retention, but also for classified too. Because we, I don't know any classified workers that live in the city. None. So, in fact, I live in San Lorenzo, I've had to commute. Luckily, I've been blessed with transportation and I'm able to live a little closer, at one time I lived in Union City in Newark. So I just want to emphasize that this is very much needed and to not forget the classified employees. In fact, I'm gonna close out with, I know a custodian right now. That's taken public transportation like I used to, and when I lived in East Oakland. And it's challenging getting off at 10 o'clock at night. Trying to catch Bart and then having to catch a bus from Bart. You get home at 11:30, 12 o'clock, and it's dangerous. So if you could do anything for the housing, also keep classified in mind too, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Caraway, Rob Collier, you're next.
Hi, everybody, I'm Rob Collier. President of the Berkeley PTA Council, and I'm speaking on behalf of the PTA Council. A year or so ago, we discussed the housing issue, which is essentially the same proposal that you have before you. And it was unanimous, the PTA Council voted to support. The development of proposals for. Employee housing. And what you have before you tonight is simply the outgrowth of that, and so there was no dissent, there was unanimous support. For the really slam dunk argument. That workforce housing, as everyone, everybody has said, is needed to help with recruitment and retention of teachers. It is in our interest, our vested interest, the school district vested interest. To have the, the best and most qualified teachers. In our district and to help them live here, to help them work here, to help them make a career here. So we support the measure, thank you for developing it, thank you for your hard work in. Putting the pieces together, and please support it and move it to the full school board, thanks again.
I'm muted, Julie.
Thank you, thank you, Rob, now we have Bruce Bagnell.
Uh, I'm unmuted, but I'm not Bruce.
Yeah, sorry about that, Chris, just stand by, Bruce is now in.
All right, I'm unmuted, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a member of Be Home, which has been supporting this. Proposal for a long time, at age 78, I have no kids or grandkids in the BUSD system. But I still, still strongly support educator housing because it's the right thing to do. And it is affordable. Acting locally, Berkeley voters support it measured all partially because it includes educator housing. There is. Little that is more important than investing to hire and retain the best educators to provide the best education to kids. I urge that all efficiencies be explored, such as prefab framing to reduce costs and speed construction. I think that the issue of adult school parking can be solved by building out the smaller parking lot. Behind the school on the east side. Which has egress to Francisco and Curtis because of the land slope, a lot there. And have three stories while presenting only two stories to Curtis Street. Such a lot could be 50,000 square feet and accommodate 300 cars, reducing the amount of parking required under the proposed housing. Let's consider all the alternative alternatives, including such as these, which can make the project viable, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagnell, then we have Chris Lee again. And our last speaker will be Joyce Barison after Chris.
Sorry, Director Sinai, can I just interrupt for a second, I, I might have told. At least one member of the community, Brad is here, that we will be doing. Public comment in the reverse order after Deep Mar's presentation, so I just want to. Reiterate what you said before, which is, if anybody wants to see a public comment on any topic, now is the time to raise your hand, right?
Yes, okay, thanks.
Uh, hi, my name is Chris Lee Egan, I live about a little over a block north of Berkeley Adult School, which is one of the locations in the little report. My oldest is about to enter BUSD as kindergarten. When I first moved to where I live now, I thought the parking lot at the Berkeley Adult School seemed like a wasted opportunity, and I can't imagine a better use for it than some workforce housing. When I'm walking around the neighborhood, honestly, the most hostile part of San Pablo Avenue is this gigantic block where the Berkeley Adult School is, where it's just chain link fence. And activating that with some housing and some ground level uses would be wonderful addition to the area. If I have any critiques, it'd be to see if we can get away with less parking, because San Pablo is filled with auto oriented uses and doesn't need more audio oriented uses, so. Options to reduce parking or provide bike share or ride share options to residents would be great. And the other thing is, if it could, I don't know, max out more housing and SP35 it up so it can be done sooner rather than later, that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Right now, I've got Joyce Barison as the last speaker, again, I'll do one more reminder that if you want to speak on any of the topics. Now is the time to raise your hand, go ahead, Joyce.
Joyce, here on.
Now, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, well, I, yeah, I think that a lot of people like me were planning to speak later, so I'm the only one. All right, so, yeah, I mean, I am not against workforce housing at all. But I am against it at this site for a lot of reasons now. One of them is that there is a school there, which is a wonderful school, the Berkeley Adult School, it's an amazing school in the community. And that parking lot is filled to capacity morning and evening with student parking. They've said that they have enough parking, but they don't. It also doesn't provide enough parking for, for the people who are going to be living there, and so that's one issue. Another issue is that the main entrance is on Virginia Street, and that's an impossible situation. There has to be a curb cut on San Pablo, that's according to the Department of Transportation. But the most important thing is there's an architect in our neighborhood. Who has really thought about this well, and he is a parent, he has children in the school district. And he feels that, that the school district has other properties where they could build a, a series of smaller units. That would accommodate teachers in a much friendlier way. They wouldn't be in one giant apartment building on San Pablo Avenue, and also that school site. Could be one day needed for. School, for an elementary school, it's possibly, so one of the main things that he's against is taking a school site. That is used for school for education and, and putting this mammoth. Apartment unit on it, instead, he has developed two or three alternate plans. For smaller units on various other properties that the school owns. That would be better, it wouldn't destroy any school property, you would still have an intact property with a full parking lot for your adult school. Or a play area for elementary school students, and teachers would be living in a much nicer environment, closer to schools that they. Would be working at, and not in just like one giant apartment unit that might negatively impact the neighborhood.
Thank you, Joyce, David Mayer. David, are you there? It looks like you're unmuted, but we're not hearing anything. Maybe we could go to Joan and come back to David? Joan Gabbino?
Am I on?
You're on.
I'm also a neighbor of the adult school, we've been here over 30 years across the street on Curtis. Yeah, and I would just like to stand up for Deep Mar because he has been a really great architect for the neighborhood. When they put in the adult school, he was, they had some. Plan for it, and he. Made a much better neighborhood plan for it that has been extremely successful, so I hope that you do pay attention to what he says. It's not that, I mean, we're not opposing housing at all, but you know, we want to do it in the best possible way. And I also want to add that I don't think we should consider only property that belongs to the school district, because I think there's no reason we can't consider any city property. For building this housing. For one thing, they, they put low income housing on the school property. The city did in the past, when, when we did distributed low income housing for families. So I don't see that there's any distinction between the school district land and the city land for this kind of project. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Gabbino, David, we're gonna try you again, David Mayer. David, are you there, we still can't hear you. Okay. We'll try one more speaker and then go back to David, and then I think we can. Start on our presentation, okay, two more speakers. So our last speaker, depending on if we get David or not, will be Susie Marzola, it is now 10 to 6, so Nancy Saban.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a, also a neighbor, I live on Francisco between San Pablo and Curtis. And. As the others have said, I agree with the goal, I agree with the need for this, but. I, you know, this, our block already was, they put 17 low income units on one block. And these same units are seen all over Berkeley in blocks of two or four or six, there's no other place in Berkeley where there's 17 on one block. That's way too many, I've lived here since 89, and. Out of 17 units, there's always one or two sort of problem. Problem renters, so we already deal with a lot of problems and garbage and. Issues around having so many units right here on this block. And then when the adult school came in, thank God, you, you listened to Deep Mar and took his plan, because the original plan was horrible. And Deep Mars and many of the things we fought for were really so much better. And we have to meet regularly with the adult school, because there's ways that, that the adult school itself impacts our block with extra traffic and extra parking. We have way more parking spaces on our street when the school is closed, so during the pandemic, we've had more spaces. When the students are here, they're not supposed to be using. Our surrounding streets, but they do, because there's probably not enough parking, so. Again, I also hope that you will listen to Deep Mars suggestions. We already are handling a lot just having to be on the same block as the adult school and having 17 units. I'm sure. You know, in the big picture, one block doesn't matter compared to everybody else, but as a, as a taxpaying citizen living here, it's. It's rough a lot of times, so you know, putting one more huge, huge. You know, structure here, it's, I'm not, I'm not thinking it's gonna make our life any easier.
Thank you, Ms. Saban. David Mayer is trying to call in, so I'm gonna go to Susie Marzola, and then we can see if David, David got in.
Good evening, my name is Susie Marzola, I'm a Berkeley resident, and I was part of the discussion that created the plan and proposal that's before you. And I'm, I'm also a person who lives in Berkeley, who lives next to a unified school district property. And I can say from experience that having a good collaborative process that involves neighborhood input during. The design process can, can serve to greatly benefit it, and I would also say that from living in Berkeley for 30 years, we definitely need more housing. We definitely need more excellent housing, we definitely need to put housing in strategic locations that can, in this particular case, help. Support the people who are so valuable to our schools, to our teachers, to the folks who keep the places clean, all of it, all of it, so. My hope, I strongly support this proposal. I look forward to hearing it discussed at the school district level, and I also encourage an ongoing conversation with the neighbors to come up with good solutions that solve the problems. That you have discussed at this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marzola, David Mayer, are you there yet? You're muted. All right, David seems to be having technical difficulties, okay, the last speaker is now Dan Smith. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'm an architect, and I'm in the same office with Deep Mar across Virginia Street to the north. And I, you know, I agree that housing sounds like a good idea. I will, I agree with Deep Mar's presentation, so I'll leave that to him, I just wanted to mention a few things, I'm one of the owners of this building. We really, if this were to happen, we really would not want to have access off Virginia, that's a big impact, we're already very impacted on parking already. There for the businesses. That like to keep access off San Pablo, I think that has worked well and should stay. Also, a six story building right across the street would have a significant sun access problem for our building. And so it should taper back from that side if it's there, but. I think looking at alternate sites and breaking down multiple housing units in different areas makes more sense, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Dan, I'll try one more time, David, are you on there by phone, raise your hand if you are. Okay, his hand is raised. You are currently muted. Give me one more shot at this. Okay. All right, David, it doesn't seem to be working, so you're always welcome to send in an email to the committee members, President Alper and myself. And we will pay attention to what you have to say. So for those of you who might have joined a few minutes late, just to let you know that the agenda. Item 6.1 and 6.3 have been tabled for discussion tonight, and we are gonna focus the presentation on workforce housing. And then if we have time at the end of the meeting, Director, Executive Director Kalise will give us an update on. Other facilities projects, so I think I'm going to turn it over to, am I turning it over to you, John, or to, oh, to Deep Mar? That's right, we're gonna have a presentation by Deep Mar.
I'm gonna go ahead and allow Deep Mar to share his screen, sorry.
Okay, and.
Do you want to mention the timing of all this?
Yeah, so Deep Mar has. 30 minutes, and that includes Q and A, so Deep Mar, if your presentation, I'm assuming will be like 15 to 20 minutes, and then we'll have some time. For the committee to ask you any questions. There you are, hi, welcome this evening, thanks for coming.
Hi, thanks for.
And, and so it is now 6:56, so President Alper is keeping time for us, so should we give you a time check? Or do you wanna?
You know, I, I have a clock here on my computer, I can handle it, thank you.
Okay, great, all right.
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you first of all for, for giving this opportunity, and. You know, just to preface this whole presentation, nobody is against workforce housing, you know, I think it's a great idea, and if anything more. The goal in providing this feedback is to just make it more attractive and better. And have a better long term perspective of what this will do for the school district and for the city of Berkeley. And so let me just read a little bit or go through some of the things that I had written up for. The communication in the neighborhood, which not all of the audience might have heard, and then I can show some slides in the PowerPoint. So my primary critique comes, you know, as a Berkeley parent, not necessarily as a neighbor, and to me, it seems highly problematic. To fracture a large contiguous school site, given the demographic trends and the trajectory towards urban infill. Lining the boulevards with five story or taller buildings, transit oriented development on both pod stations. And accessory dwelling units popping up in many backyards, this will result in a significant population growth. I do support urban infill, strongly support it, if done right. Part of the equation, however, must be to set aside reserves for civic functions to support the growth. And the Berkeley Adult School site should remain intact as a spare K through, K through 12 campus in the future. You know, we currently have 110, 120,000 inhabitants projected a decade or two into the future, and this might be approaching 150,000. And so I think this is very important to not fracture the, the few or maybe the only remaining contiguous side. Even in the near future, disaster might strike, earthquake, fire, and it then might require school relocations. The recent move of Oxford School to West Campus means that there's no longer an extra school site that could be readily activated for that purpose. Hence, it would be prudent not to encumber the Berkeley Adult School site and keep it viable as a future school site. The primary mandate of the Berkeley Unified School District is to educate, not as a housing developer. I'm in favor of workforce housing, but the housing should be infill of smaller pieces of district land. That, that pieces that are not viable for K through 12. Campuses, the school district should also use its special status as a self governing body. In coordination with the city, to come up with innovative and creative housing solutions, not just plopping down another large apartment building. Putting 110 units of workforce housing into a single apartment building is not really in the spirit of community integration. More so than for profit developers, the district has probably, is probably much better positioned to realize missing middle scale housing projects. Such as townhouses and smaller multiplex buildings. to realize missing middle-scale housing projects such as townhouses and smaller multiplex buildings that could be distributed throughout the city. To illustrate the ideas of distributed workforce housing, I created some diagrams that I will show in a moment that show how the hundred and ten units that are currently now proposed at the Berkeley Adult Site, how those could be distributed in a way that does not compromise current or future K through twelve sites. And so let me, with this, go into, share my screen and show those to you. So let me go to this here. Well, I guess I'll just do this. Let me just share my. Let me see if this works. Okay, can you see the PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
Okay, let me start this. Okay. So we here have the current proposal. And so the redish areas are Berkeley school sites. The larger ones, the lighter colors, the middle school and the high school, and the others are the elementary schools scattered through the district. The, can you also see my mouse moving?
Yes.
Okay, good. So the, these blue boxes are like blue little houses signifying one unit each. And so here are a hundred and ten units blocked together. That's the current proposal at the adult school site. And what is to be noted here is that, of course, this is a very peripheral location. If you look how this is distributed throughout the district, especially if you want to encourage, you know, walking or biking to school, this is not a great location for that matter. The other aspect that can be seen here is what are the sizes of school sites? And the adult school site currently is just under five acres, which is, to my understanding, already undersized compared to CDE recommendations for elementary school sites. But it doesn't mean that it's not viable. It took the Thousand Oaks school population when their building was renovated, and it's obviously a school site. And even if you compare it to Ruth Actie, formerly known as Jefferson School, those are comparable sizes. Many others are even smaller. So it is a viable, ostensibly a viable elementary site, but it's undersized by state standards. And so it seems if you chop one-third of this site, it is no longer the site that it could be to fulfill your mandate of future education with the population growth, that is to be expected. And before I move on in the diagram, these yellow areas are kind of non-educational uses right now. It's the bus terminal on Gilman and Sixth Street. And here in South Berkeley, that's the Oregon Russell site that currently holds the maintenance facility. And so hence, I started looking at how could this be distributed? And the, there were four sites that were investigated in the original twenty seventeen, like feasibility study. And out of those, West Campus and the Adult School emerged. And I assume one of the core reasons was because the other two, Oregon Russell and Milvia, didn't really yield as many units. But then, of course, was predicated on the notion that it would be one site. And it changes the equation. If you look, well, if you distribute it to multiple sites, then you can achieve even more units. The other, of course, change that occurred since twenty seventeen is the closing of Oxford School as at its original location. And that changes, you know, things fundamentally in my mind because now there is a site that is unused and you have to deal with it one way or the other. You just don't want to sit it there idling, and it's no longer viable for school, but it could be viable for housing. And I can get into this in more detail later. In this particular scheme, it was distributed between Milvia, the tennis courts across from the high school, which was kind of assessed at something up to a hundred units in your preliminary study. You know, I just assigned seventy to it here and forty for Oxford. After looking at, into the Oxford side restrictions a little bit more closely, I think the forty would be too high for Oxford. One should probably go to something closer to thirty and then have eighty at Milvia. So this is a kind of basically a north and south approach. And it's like something that wouldn't really interfere with the Oregon Russell site. And I'm not pretty, you know, what exactly is going on there and how much space is needed? So this was an approach to see what can we do if it's two sides. If you go to the next slide here that looks at what if it gets distributed on three sides? Here you can see the Oxford side got already reduced to thirty units. And the balance was split between Russell, Oregon, and Milvia. And that's kind of, you know, basically north, central, and south on a kind of axis through the middle of town whereby Oregon is not maxed out. The original study, I think, assigned up to, what is it, seventy to eighty units to Oregon? So possibly this could be done in a way that some of the maintenance function could still stay there. Because, of course, whenever you do something, it's like musical chairs. The only thing that does not involve musical chairs is Oxford because it currently has no active use on it. And so in the Oregon side, of course, is very well located in South Berkeley, where there are a lot of schools, and this sits right in the triangle between Malcolm X and Longfellow and Sylvie Mendez School, formerly the Conde. And then, you know, I think this is a good location if it can be done in a way that can solve the needs for the maintenance facility. And so the last one, you know, shifts the the forty units that were on Milvia farther west to kind of form this triangle and puts it along Curtis Street on the West Campus parking lot. And so I already hear in my mind, oh, no, we can't do that. There's a creek. Yes, there is a creek, but that is not a problem if you're going with a distributed approach. So I looked at these sites. This is, this is West Campus. Here's kind of an overview map, and so we're looking at this big parking lot here, the area between Curtis and Browning. And if you look at the survey, well, that's the creek layout. That's the historical creek bed. And it's, you know, you can put a twelve thousand square foot building per level and stack it two or three stories. If you go three-story, there's also a retaining wall on this side. So you could kind of bring this to Curtis Street level and potentially step it down to the smaller residences. This is this type of, like, not a huge building, but also not kind of single-family scale. It is a missing middle-type component that represents a good transition from high-density kind of boulevard development, transit corridor development to the residential neighborhoods. And that's, this is exactly what Berkeley needs and that's often demanded. But there are very few entities that are in the position to realize that. Because it's from a developing standpoint, it's too large for small-scale developers. It's too small for large-scale developers. And it would require upzoning of the peripheral areas of the high-density. And that is a major, major thing that is so complicated that it typically doesn't get tackled. The same reason the US still uses the Imperial system instead of the metric system. It's just a very high burden to overcome. But the school district is in a unique position in that you have control over your land. You have more leeway in the zoning interpretation and dealing with the city. In combination with smart application of the state density bonus, you can pull this off. So if there's a will, there's a way. And here is one way how we can do it. Now you've got forty units. And with this approach, you can keep the Milvia site available as this future Joker card in your deck of cards, so to speak. Because with population growth, you might also run out of space at the high school site. And then there's really nowhere to go because it's all boxed in. Keeping that site available for an expansion of the high school or related functions, potentially an education center that includes a kind of slimmed-down, more urban version of the adult school and really is in a downtown location like that, if and when, you know, the current adult school site would be, have to be used as an expansion K through twelve site. So I think that's the type of strategic planning I'm looking for as a Berkeley parent. What is this going to look like in ten, fifteen, twenty years? Rather than just, you know, plopping a big building down in what seems to be the easiest, least resistance way in this formulaic fashion, the way you just do it, you know, when you do typical affordable housing. And I think you have better options that you haven't really explored yet. And by the way, this is not a critique against, like, RCD or MeToon, who, you know, prepared these studies because they were following your guidelines. So it's really, it's in your responsibility as the school district to guide them and to give them the ability to think outside of the box. If you shoehorn them in, you can't really expect anything that goes beyond that tight framework that you provide. So let's look at the other side that hadn't been on the map before, and that's Oxford. And as I said, it's a site that is unused right now. So what's the plan? You probably won't just have these buildings sit there idle, do nothing. You know, residential structure is different from it being a school. There are higher demands for a school building. It's governed by the Field Act. And so seismic safety and access and all of these things. So this has, I think, tremendous potential. The problem, and that's why I kind of went from forty units to thirty in these diagrams, is that it's zoned R1. So it has a very low intensity zoning. And but, you know, just, the site is about fifty-five thousand square feet. And you need minimum five thousand for a residence. So take fifty-five, and you can get eleven regular parcels in concept. And, you know, and if you have houses, if you look at the grain of the neighborhood, you know, you have relatively big houses all around there. So in concept, it could be eleven houses, except that they are not individual houses with just one unit. It's, the units can be up to four thousand square feet, and you don't even have to make them that big. Then each one has one primary unit, one accessory dwelling unit, which is eight hundred fifty square feet, and one junior accessory dwelling unit, which is five hundred square feet. That fits very well into the unit mix that you have proposed. So, gah-bum, suddenly you have eleven times three, that's thirty-three units, in a great location. They can be spread out a little bit with a commons, you know, that has maybe some kind of co-housing type amenities, you know, where it's, there's a shared component to it. I can even see a situation where the existing school building gets not torn down. And but because the greenest way of building is adapting existing structures. And when you turn former classrooms into loft-style apartments, you know, you can add more walls to partition things for bracing. You, there's just ways to do that. And I think it's one potential way is to reutilize that building, put, I don't know, ten, twenty smaller apartments in there and then build kind of townhouses or fourplexes around it. So there's, I think, there's a lot of room for creativity to make sense out of this. And I think this would fit in scale and it would fit into the nature of the site. And, you know, if you use the state, the whole point of this is affordability. If you make this affordable, then if you bring the affordability ratio up, you can, you can use the new state guidelines, the twenty nineteen state density bonus, and basically density restrictions go out the window. And so you have to get to eighty percent of affordable units, which, of course, is also your goal. And it also has to be close to transportation. And believe it or not, this side is close to transportation. The map on the upper left is the, within a quarter mile of major transportation. And Oxford is right up here where my cursor is moving. There are six bus lines within three blocks. The sixty-seven bus is one street away and takes you to the Bart Station immediately. You can be at Oxford and be at the Embar Cordero within half an hour, if you want to go there. So this is a, this is a site, I think, that's very suitable for housing. It is central and it would cover on the map a lot of schools in North Berkeley that really would not, would be poorly served by, you know, other locations. And now maybe to wrap this up, the, so there are these two sides that were previously not considered. And, you know, all kinds of arguments were put forward why you can't do it. I would argue you can. Yes, we can. You just have to adjust your mindset and think a little bit outside of the box. And then comes the cost argument. Well, it's going to be too expensive to distribute it. One consideration, if you, what's, the question is always, what's the comparison? What are the externalities? Of course, the elephant in the room in my mind is the externality for the Berkeley Adult School site is that you're really painting yourself into the corner for future school sites. You no longer have a vacant site. And in, for population growth or any type of disaster, you have absolutely nowhere to go. And with the proposal of putting all the units onto the adult school site, you are basically closing all the exit roads. You have nowhere to go. That's the biggest element. But there are others. And I think if you look at the cost, the Berkeley Adult School project would require a fifty thousand square foot two-story podium. That's immensely expensive. And from a green building perspective, and trust me, that's my core expertise, zero-energy buildings and low-carbon buildings. Most of the carbon footprint in the embodied energy of a building is concrete and steel. A concrete and reinforced concrete podium, which this would be, fifty thousand square foot two-story. That's huge. That's an enormous, you know, burden, both on the environment and cost of construction. And sure, there's economies of scale. If you build one big building, the cost per square foot tends to be lower than, you know, building smaller individual buildings. That's the reason why pro-profit development looks the way it looks. But if you start factoring in these special conditions like the oversized garage and the externality such as longer commutes and, you know, more people staying with car commutes rather than walking or biking. If you factor in all these externalities, I think the net sum is that a distributed approach will be cheaper and certainly more ecological. And so with that, I would say, if you have any questions, I would be glad to answer them. And I think the core message here is, yes, we want workforce housing. We wanted to make it better. We want to make sure that it's not speed, but it's speed in the right direction that governs this. And the Oxford relocation changed the game, and I think it's time to take this seriously and come to the best possible solution. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Deep Mar. President Alper, do you have any questions?
Deep Mar, thank you so much for this presentation. I really appreciate it.
Can you unshare the screen?
Yes, I will. Let me just go here.
As, as the timekeeper, we have about five minutes left.
Do I need to do this, or do you do this from your end to stop share?
You would stop sharing.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you again, Deep Mar. I, one question I have is, you know, if you're, I understand the concept of distributing the property across the city, across our properties. I, I, was the, and I understand that you, that you don't think we should put the entire housing that we're considering right now on the adult school property. But did you consider the adult school property as one of the sites that could be one of the distributed sites across the city? I, I was surprised not to see that one on your.
It could, it could. But I, I think that depends on, that I think requires a thorough study of what would it take to keep it a viable elementary site? I think that differentiates it from all the other sites. It's the one last big chunk. And, and, you know, and already has a school on it with classrooms. Say you have a fire in one of the schools tomorrow, the other schools. And you need to come up with a solution to get student, right now, okay, we're all in COVID mode. It's a different story, but under normal circumstances. There's a site, there's, there's a school that is ready to receive students. It would need to do some redo on the, on the parking lot and the layout, but basically it's there. And I, I can see a situation where, you know, there is some of the distributed housing on the site, for example. And that would also have the benefit, I think, one of the problems on the adult school side is that if you put a building in front of it, now you have a citywide and regional institution, the adult school, hidden from sight from the, from the, from San Pablo Avenue and tucked into a residential neighborhood. That's, that's okay for an elementary school. It's not okay for a civic institution such as the adult school. And so if you only have a partial building, like one corner, that would leave the access open, it would be part of a distributed solution. I can see that. But as I, what I was trying to lay out is, you have other sites that are strategically better located and more central, where I think they lend themselves better to the distributed approach. But the first thing is to open up to the idea of a distributed approach. And I wouldn't, you know, I would completely entertain part of that being on the, on the adult school side. And if you, and maybe the number of a hundred and ten isn't fixed. It could be more, or you could start with, you know, like a certain number and then have other sites that you fill in over time. And that's also as grant funding becomes available and how you see how that gets received by, by the, by the workforce. Maybe one thing one should mention is the, the generational thinking here. There's this huge influx of these teachers around thirty that I, you know, I, I read through your very thorough report, four hundred seventy-nine pages. So now you have this huge cohort of thirty-something teachers coming in. And, yeah, sure, they will be fine with a studio for one bedroom until they start a family. So how do these units adjust? How, how is the flexibility? And so there may be a staggered approach where you've, where you start somewhere and then you see how it's received and what the need is and how you can adjust to it. There's something more nimble about this. And that could also be a combination of using the concept of the JADUs, which are junior accessory dwellings. So some of them make up of apartments and that could work well in these townhouse-style houses. Like, for example, what I proposed at Oxford, where there's a two-bedroom combined with a JADU. And, you know, if you see the, the needs shifting, and then after five years, you could say, okay, the only, the only thing you need to do is open a door or unlock a door. And then suddenly, a two-bedroom and a JADU become a three-bedroom apartment. And so you have flexibility built in. And looking at the demographic chart that you have in your report, it's really stunning to see this, these young teachers come in at such force. And it's a great development. And as parents here, we want to attract them and we want to retain them. And I can tell you, having listened to some of the, you know, earlier presentations and meetings, what I'm proposing there as the distributed approach will be much more attractive for the, for teachers and staff than living in an apartment building.
So thank you, Deep Mar. We're actually at time. So I really appreciate your presentation and, and your thinking and putting time into this. And I think we wanted to provide an opportunity because the community around the Berkeley Adult School has been very active partners with the adult school. And we want to continue to engage in that. I think what we want to do now is hear the presentation from the consultants who did the study. And, you know, I'll just maybe kick off for a second and say that, as, as I've said to the community when we've met with them various times, as well as with other colleagues, I don't see this one project as being the only housing project that BUSD will ever do. I actually think that we do need to look at a variety of our properties for looking at housing. And I'm looking forward to hearing more about the, the opportunity for the Berkeley Adult School. But that in no way eliminates the opportunity to continue to do housing on our other sites further down in the future. And I think the way you've looked at it and some of our properties has some real potential for seeing where housing could go. And John, I don't know if you want to introduce, but I do want to let everybody know. And I don't know if you were going to talk about this, but for the last year or so, we have had a workforce housing subcommittee. Were you going to talk about that? Or do you want me to just quickly give a little background on it?
If you'd like to quickly, quickly give a little background, that would be great.
Yeah, because I just want folks to know that this didn't just come out of the blue as will be presented by the consultants. The district has been looking at workforce housing for a couple of years now, starting off with the very first survey. And when we surveyed teachers and staff about workforce housing, we looked at what the opportunity sites were, and I'll let the presentation go toward that. But the school board directed staff to look in partnership with the city to secure some funding to do the feasibility study of two opportunity sites. And we created a subcommittee for workforce housing that at the time Director Appel and I were the board members, who were the, the point people on that. And we had representatives from BFT and BCC and district staff on that committee. We met a number of times throughout the work of the consultants. And now with transitions on the board, Director, our President Alper and I are kind of shepherding this topic as part of the facilities committee. So I appreciate everybody's participation in being here tonight. And I'll punt it over to Executive Director Kalice.
So real quickly, I want to point out, we do have David Mayer now, and he is, I have the number that he called it on. Would you like to give him an opportunity to speak?
President Alper, are you okay with that?
Yeah, if we can keep it very brief.
Two minutes.
Okay.
Just because we tried for a couple of times to get him on.
That's true. That's true.
Very good. All right, he's on now, David, if you want to unmute.
How did, how do you unmute it on your phone? You have to press something, right?
That I can't tell you. I'm, I'm gonna, I'll send him the ass to unmute, but I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with running this.
I think it's star eight or star nine typically.
Star nine, Lars says star nine. Lars would know. David, can you try pressing star nine?
All right.
His comments.
Yeah, David, I think I saw a chat going on. Also, just to let folks know who are here from the public, you guys are chatting and stuff, but we aren't going to be responding to the chats. We'll be listening to the presentation and then having the discussion afterwards. So thank you. John.
Sorry, thank you. So I'll actually introduce Carolyn Bookhart and Lisa Jacks. They're with RCD and Methune. And they're going to give a short fifteen-minute presentation. And then from there, we'll move back to me, if that's okay. So we do really need to keep this on track for fifteen minutes. So with that, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Carolyn Bookhart. I work in the Real Estate Development Department for Resources for Community Development. We're an affordable housing developer that's based here in Berkeley. We've been here for thirty-five years and have developed a number of properties here in Berkeley and across the Bay Area. Lisa, can you expand that at all? It might be a little hard for people to see. But I'll go ahead and get started. So as Julie presented, I thought that was a really nice segue that, you know, I know the, the school board has been really concerned about the housing challenges, housing stability challenges for its workforce for quite a few years. You can go to the next slide, please. And I think there's been a lot of struggles. I mean, for, you know, a lot of folks in our community have been struggling to afford to live here with the, you know, skyrocketing rents and housing prices. And so there was a survey that was conducted in two thousand seventeen. You can see here, there was an overwhelming majority of the USD staff that really talked about how they were struggling to afford to live here, facing a lot of financial pressures and a significant interest in hearing more about affordable workforce housing that might be sponsored by the school district. So then about a year or so ago, we were, our team was selected to just analyze the feasibility of that approach. What might be possible in developing some affordable housing for those school district staff? And what the parameters would be and kind of what would the next steps be for actually partnering with a developer team to make something like that happen? So we're really been engaged with analyzing that and helping the board to just determine if that's the right approach, if there's something feasible, and if so, how to move forward. And we've been working on that this past year. And now we're kind of, you know, wrapping up the presentations for the board to make decisions on the next steps. Next slide, please. So the approach that we took is, we actually did an updated survey to get some additional information. We did some case study research of other school districts working in the same space. Site and zoning and design studies, looked at a number of different financing scenarios. We did hold a couple of community listing sessions with the, with staff and also in the adult school community. It was fairly early on in the shelter-in-place timing. So we did not have super great participation in those community meetings, unfortunately. Although the, the two surveys that were conducted did have a substantial response rate. I think the first survey might have had, you know, seven or eight hundred folks respond. And the second one was around six hundred. So we have gotten a lot of great feedback from a larger cohort of Berkeley staff through the surveys and then a smaller representative, representation from the community meetings. Next slide. So in the updated survey that we did, we just wanted to look at some specific factors, primarily household size and household income. And also just kind of a restating question around, are you interested in this, in affordable housing sponsored by the school district? We also tried to get a little bit more into detail that this may be a large apartment building. You may be required to do certain things like income certifications to kind of drill down on, are people still interested? And there still was a, a majority response saying, yes, I'm still interested. I'm still struggling with affordable housing and I'm interested in, in school district-sponsored affordable housing. Just some demographics. We did find that, you know, the kind of the majority of household sizes are in those kind of one-to-three-person households. But there's also a good chunk of folks that are in, you know, larger families. And then in terms of income, there's a pretty broad range from, you know, kind of thirty percent of the area median income all the way up to one-twenty percent of the area median income with a good chunk kind of in the middle. But this is really important for understanding what type of housing actually would want to be, what you'd want to create to, to reflect the household sizes and the incomes of the folks that you're trying to serve. So this was really important information to get. Next slide, please. I think this is just a quick graph on kind of what is affordable housing, who qualifies. You know, area median income is something that is updated every year through kind of census and HUD data based on the, the county and the metropolitan area. So here in Berkeley, and it's also, it's calculated based on household size. So you can have, so this chart kind of shows that, say, for example, you know, median income right now is about seventy-eight thousand, I think this might be a year old now, for a one-person household, a hundred and eleven thousand for a four-person household. Thirty percent of the area median income is twenty-six to thirty-seven thousand. And so just sort of thinking about the range of incomes that BUSD staff have, this is kind of the range that, you know, that you're really talking about when you're trying to create housing that's going to be affordable to these incomes. Next slide, please. And then typically the rents, what you're trying to do is create rents that, you know, what's, and a standard for affordability is that you're spending about thirty percent of your income towards, towards your housing costs. So this just kind of gives you an idea of where, you know, affordable rents for that range of incomes might be from, you know, eight hundred to thirty-five hundred for someone. It's on a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Whereas market rents, you know, are ranging from fifteen hundred to seven thousand. So it does kind of show there's still, even, you know, in the more recent times, there's a pretty big disconnect between what folks can actually afford and what's, what rents you're finding in the community. Next slide, please. So the other thing we did, we did look at some case studies of other jurisdictions in the Bay Area that are kind of doing the same thing that BUSD is trying to do, is really grapple with how to create some affordable housing for their staff. Daly City, Mountain View, San Francisco, Palo Alto are all working on these initiatives at different stages. There are some older developments across the state that we looked at a little bit, but I think given just kind of current financing available, current market environments, current construction, you know, things like that, it was helpful really to look at folks that are working on this now so that we can really learn from them as far as kind of how they're approaching delivering this type of housing for their staff. Next slide, please. So some of the things that we learned from that are very much consistent and what we would recommend to the school board as far as kind of how this, something like this might be structured. So they were all, you know, in the sixty to one hundred and thirty-five unit range. I think that reflects the, the benefit of economies of scale, you know, the challenges and the complexity of creating this type of housing and really maximizing the benefits that you can get from the, from kind of the limited assets that the school district might have. The income targeting was very similar to what you saw in the survey. Income response was kind of targeting folks from forty percent of the area median income. So, you know, around thirty, forty thousand dollars a year to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income, which gets you up around a hundred to a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand, depending on household size. So that really covers the range of folks that are working for the school district. They all are using similar financing structures that we are recommending here. City and county funding is, I think Julie mentioned earlier, you know, there is Measure O funding available at the city right now that could be a significant support for this type of development. There's a program called Low Income Housing Tax Credits that basically provide tax credits for equity investors. That's a, a substantial source of funding for affordable housing. And then, you know, debt financing, one school district used, used a general obligation bond and some zoning requirements from another source. But so that would be similar. What's really available, I think, for BUSD is, you know, low-income housing tax credits, city funding. There's also some state funding that's available right now for middle-income housing. And then kind of a permanent mortgage that could be leveraged from some of the income from the property.
You want a time check, Carolyn? It's about five and a half minutes left.
Okay. So this is important, I think, just as far as how this would be structured. So this is important, I think, just as far as how this would be structured, is that in this situation, the, the school district would not be the developer. The school district, which could do some kind of RFP, request for proposals, to, to select a developer, architect, owner, property management team that could really deliver, own, deliver and manage this property so that the school district wouldn't be the property manager. And I think that's really important. And this, the school board could structure it as either a sale of the land, but also could do it as a long-term ground lease so that the city maintains long-term ownership of the land. I think that might, let's jump to the next slide, Lisa, and maybe just jump onto your, you want to jump over to yours.
It might help to, I would, I would suggest jumping to the site discussion, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm going to be covering that portion.
Yeah, I was just gonna, President Alper, I'm not sure what, I mean, I know our meeting's scheduled to go till seven. I don't know if people have a little bit of flexibility on the panel to be able to go a little bit later than seven. I don't know.
I can.
I know Carolyn and Lisa, are you as able to?
Sure.
I, I want to be careful. I mean, we had a lot of public comment and then, you know, the community presentation. And I want to be careful not to completely cut this one short.
Yeah.
So if it's okay, I'd like you guys to continue.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. I agree.
Okay, so I will jump into some of the physical studies that we did. So as, as you all know, when we were hired, we were tasked with studying the feasibility of providing workforce housing at two sites. One was the parking lot at the Berkeley Adult School and the other is what was then an empty field at West Campus on University. So for our studies, we evaluated the physical capacity alongside the financial modeling to determine what would really be feasible at each of these sites. And what we found is that they're both actually really great sites for housing development. They're on major streets, which is advantageous from a zoning perspective. It gives us good capacity in terms of unit count. And they're both also really close to mass transit, which is a plus. So really, you know, if the district is going to decide which one to pursue first, it's really more about district priorities rather than one site being more obviously better for housing than the other. And as we all know, the field on West Campus is no longer vacant. So that has complicated moving forward with that site. But I will go into that study as well as part of this. So starting with the Berkeley Adult School, this is an aerial view. Can, everybody can see the screen, okay?
Okay.
This is an aerial view of the neighborhood. San Pablo Avenue is running along here. Can, is my cursor visible? Okay, great. So the site we studied is outlined in yellow. So as you can see, it's the majority of the parking lot fronting San Pablo. And then this is our massing study stitched into the neighborhood. Oh, actually, I did forget one key point. As I get into the high-level summary of these findings, I just, I want to be clear that these studies are capacity studies and they're not building designs. So really, these studies are intended to satisfy for ourselves and demonstrate for the district that it's feasibly possible to provide this workforce housing within the constraints that we identified on each of these sites and to inform an RFP for development should the board decide to move forward with that. So I just want to be clear that while you're going to see something that might look a little bit like a building, it's really a massing study and a capacity study. So please do keep that in mind. So back to the specifics of the Berkeley Adult School site. One issue that became clear almost immediately is the importance of the parking to the Berkeley Adult School program. We heard time and again that the parking lot is full when classes are in session and that providing that parking is, is really key. So that became a key constraint as we dove into our studies. So what we're suggesting as part of our capacity study is a unit count of somewhere between 110 and 120 units. Physically, by zoning, we could actually accommodate quite a bit more. But as we looked at it in conjunction with financing, a larger building became not financeable. So that's why we're suggesting this size. The, the massing itself would be probably four stories of wood construction. That would be where the residential units would be over a two-story concrete parking garage. And it's that two-story concrete parking garage that's allowing us to replace the parking for the Berkeley Adult School within the building. Our studies showed 140 spaces for adult school use alongside about 55 spaces for residents. Now, the existing parking lot has about 153 spaces, so this is a slight reduction. But again, because our studies are diagrammatic, it's possible as the design moves forward that they'd be able to accommodate more. But we feel confident that 140 is definitely achievable. The ground floor would have a residential lobby and about 10,000 square feet of commercial or resident amenity space. And that's required by zoning along San Pablo. So then, moving to the West Campus Field Site, again, an aerial view, just to give everybody some context. University Avenue is running along here. And again, the site that we studied was, what was then the empty field along University at Curtis. Again, our massing study is stitched into the context. I think one of the key issues here became, you know, is this a full build-out of that field? Or are we trying to reserve some of it for potential play space? And we did complete studies with both of those scenarios. But for tonight, I'm just going to focus on the full build-out, which is shown here. So with this study, we have a similar unit count, 120 to 130 units. This is pretty much maxed out of the zoning capacity here. And the reason that this became, this is financeable is because we don't have the two-story parking garage here. We're not replacing like a significant amount of parking for another use. This massing is suggesting five study stories, I'm sorry, of wood construction over a one-story parking garage. So the total building height is the same, six stories, but it's just more of it is residential. A slightly lower parking ratio here, but nothing unusual for a development of this type. And again, the ground floor, particularly on University Avenue, would have commercial space and/or resident amenity space. Also, just wanted to provide a couple of examples of housing scale, just so folks understand kind of the type of building that we're talking about. This is Oxford Plaza and the Fine Arts Building, both here in Berkeley. So both of these buildings are four or five stories of residential construction over a ground floor that's dedicated to commercial and/or parking. So just so folks have sort of some context of what the building might be like. And then the, the final part of our scope was having these listening meetings with the community members, which we've talked about a little bit, the first one with Berkeley staff and the second with the Berkeley Adult School neighbors. So I'll just quickly go through some of what we learned here. They were held this past November over Zoom. And as Carolyn mentioned, they were somewhat lightly attended, unfortunately. But we did get some good feedback and information out of these meetings. So with the staff meeting, you know, those folks were excited about affordable housing and living in the space, in the place where they work, as would be expected. There were some concerns about parking, you know, are we providing enough? And there was also some concern about the relationship of housing and employment, which is something that would have to be sort of sussed out in the tenancy agreements as the project moves forward, if it does do so. And then our second meeting was with the Berkeley Adult School neighbors. I think almost everything that was talked about there has been raised tonight. So I probably, I won't spend time on it. It was, you know, talk about, you know, is the development too large? Is it contextual enough with the residential neighborhood? The scattered site approach that Deep Mar went through tonight was mentioned. And we did hear a lot about the history of the district relationship with the community. So, so that completes our presentation. And in summary, you know, in our opinion, this is a very feasible initiative and would provide really much-needed workforce housing here in Berkeley for district employees.
Thank you, Lisa. Can I ask you to stop sharing?
Yeah, John?
No, I was asking Lisa to stop sharing, I'm sorry. Yeah, would you like, would you like me to go now, Julie? I'm sorry. So I want to thank RCD and Methune for presenting tonight. I really want to thank Deep Mar and the neighbors of the Berkeley Adult School. They've definitely given this a lot of thought and I appreciate it. And I know Dr. Stevens, Superintendent, does, and I'm sure everyone here does as well. So Dr. Stevens and I had a chance to actually meet with Deep Mar and another neighbor about a week ago. And we heard a very similar, if not almost identical, presentation. And unfortunately, due to time constraints in that meeting, we didn't have an opportunity to respond. So I just want to give a couple of responses real quick and then I'll move us along. You know, when we look at the other sites, there's a couple of things that weren't considered. So first, we, we really, we went back, we, we looked at it again, even beyond what we've already looked at during the initial, the initial Workforce Housing Subcommittee, when we started to consider what sites to use. It's important to point out that the Millvia Street Site is already slated for construction. Oregon Street is really not a viable option. This is where plant operations is, and there's unfortunately nowhere to move us. The other site, Oxford, is, the board still has to decide what to do with the Oxford Site. And then the Bonar Street Parking Lot was not considered and only West Campus was. And the reason for that is the West Campus Parking Lot, as all the original four sites are, are properly zoned. The Bonar Street Parking Lot is not. The Bonar Street Parking Lot is zoned as residential. So that's why that wasn't studied. It's a R1 or an R2, I believe. Additionally, I just wanted to address the, the statement about if we were to build at the BAS Parking Lot, that we remove our option for using that as a school. And Deep Mar talked about, you know, the size recommendations that come from CDE, and he's correct. So the size recommendations, typically you will not find those met as far as acreage in urban districts such as ours, which is why CDE offers waivers for that. And it's not a problem in urban areas such as Berkeley. Even if we were to build housing at the Berkeley Adult School in the parking lot, that does not prohibit us from using it as a future school site, whether it be a TK5, a K5, a K8, or even a K12. The reality is, is we still have the school intact. And if we had to add additional areas such as a playground, we have the back parking lot. Now, that would definitely limit staff parking at that site, but no different than it is at any of our other sites, as it is with any urban school district such as ours. So with that, I mean, we really, really considered Deep Mar's suggestions. I appreciate all the work that he's done. But the reality is, is as we look across this and we look to lose or we look to use, excuse me, either one site or actually use multiple sites, it seems that, one, we don't have the multiple sites because they're slated or already being used for other things. And two, it does seem that the Berkeley Adult School remains to be the best viable option. It's also too important to point out that while the presentation did talk about transportation opportunities at or near the other locations, the reality is, is San Pablo also has that. It is considered to be a transportation corridor. We're meeting that need. At this point, honestly, I would say staff is going to recommend that we move this to the board as a recommendation to the full board to proceed with an RFP to develop the Berkeley Adult School Site.
Thank you, John. Before we entertain discussion, President Alper, I'd like to see, I mean, I've now heard the presentation a few times. But if you have any questions of our consultants around what was presented.
Yeah. Thank you, Director Sinek, and thank you, Lisa and Carolyn. I just had, that was a great presentation, I really appreciate it. I just had two questions. One was, and this was brought up by one of the public commentators, can you say a little bit about where the entrance to the, to the housing would be? Would it be, could it be on San Pablo?
Can I, if I can interject real quick on that tie, and I just, I can answer for them. But it, it could absolutely be on San Pablo. And I mentioned, I forgot to mention that, and I apologize. What was shown in the original drawing was, it was really just a graphic representation of a massing study. It would never have been intended to be along Virginia Street. And I apologize to cut you off, but I meant to, had a note to mention that and I overlooked it, so I apologize.
I know, I appreciate it. And then, and then I was, the, just one maybe minor question. But the, you mentioned the commercial space, or I think it was like resident, what was the word you used? Amenities on that ground floor?
Yeah.
Is there any issue with having commercial space in a school district property? Or, yeah?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
There could be a, I mean, what, commercial space meaning like what, a store or restaurant or?
Probably wouldn't be a restaurant, but, but yeah, it could be a retail store. Honestly, I think it's probably more likely to be a community room or maybe like a shared work area or, you know, something, something along those lines of what has always been in my mind. I don't know that it'll end up being that, but.
There's nothing about it being school district property that limits what we can do there.
Okay.
I, in another district that I worked in, we had school district property that also doubled for retail space. It's, there, there's no regulation that prohibits that.
Okay. I had a question about the timing of the Measure O Funding, Director Sinek, but that's probably not for the consultants, it's actually for you.
No, I can, I can answer that. But I have a question that I want to clarify from Carolyn and Lisa's. So the, the Berkeley Adults Understanding is a massing study and it's not a design or architectural design. And it may not even be that 110 or 120 get built there. It could be through a third-party developer. It, it gets, it gets framed more clearly on what we're going to do with it. Is the way, though, that you did the massing study, is it totally aligned with the zoning for the area? Or are there any variances that would need to be applied for?
So the only, it does have a density bonus factor in it. So that would be the only thing. But that, that technically is complying with zoning because we would meet the affordability requirement.
Okay. And just, again, maybe this is for Director Kalis, is when we talk about doing an RFP, just so that we're really clear on what the Facilities Committee is making a decision on, is the RFP is for a third-party developer to basically have a long-term land lease and develop the property. So like if there's commercial, whether it's, whether it's community or, or, or commercial, that would be under the purview of the permitting with the third-party developer. So the permitting process is not like a school, right? It's like, it would go through normal city permitting and design review and the like, right?
That is absolutely correct. The RFP would be for a third-party developer to not only design and build out that site, it would also be to manage that site. And we do have stipulations drafted in that, in that RFP that we're just about done with the draft on now, to also where we will be working with a board-appointed design group, which does include members of the community so that those folks do have a seat at the table to have a, to have a say in how this gets designed.
Okay. And then for the RFP, would we also be ensuring that there's some type of governance committee that includes our, our labor partners so that, that, that issue that was raised around the, the connection between your employment and your housing is severed from the school district and it's, it's a governing committee? However it gets designed, that the developer would be responsible for responding to it? Is, is that the concept as well?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, those were my follow-up questions. Do you have any more? Okay, so do, so maybe I'll just talk a little bit about the Measure O process and the timing. Because that, that's the other thing that a couple of people in public comment talked about, not wanting to, to rush and, you know, look at various financing structures. And one of the things that is a catalyst for our process and bringing this to the board is that when the voters of Berkeley pass Measure O, they specifically identify educator housing as part of that bond measure. And in that bond measure, there's three issuances of funding that's going to be coming out. They did the first one last year. The second one, the process starts in the next couple of months and will have an issuance at the beginning of 2022. And then the third issuance will be in 2023. The last, I was going to say last year, COVID has got me kind of contorted on the timeframe. I think it was last summer, the city council actually supported a Measure O recommendation that funding be slated or reserved for educator housing in the second tranche. It, and the Measure O Commission, I just found out yesterday, is actually meeting on Monday to make a recommendation to issue a notice of, a NOFA, a notice of funding availability for BUSD housing for approximately $24.5 million. So they're going to decide on Monday whether to issue a NOFA that is specifically for educator housing. So our opportunity to capture some of the Measure O financing is directly tied to the second tranche of the Measure O. And if we can't respond to that NOFA, the reservation for BUSD funding is pretty much gone. And my understanding is the third tranche, and this is also the Measure O Commission is going to talk about, is largely probably going to be concentrated in Ashby and North Berkeley BART housing. So if we want to be able to capture the Measure O funding, it's the second tranche that is the one that's most appropriate for us. So moving forward on housing, on the only site that's currently possible, and again, I'm going to say again, I think we have other sites that we could do housing in the future. But if we want to be able to move on it for our educators, our teachers and staff now, doing something at the Berkeley Adult School with a third-party developer, the time, the timing is really ripe, and it's now. So I would recommend that we would move forward for that.
Can, Director Sinek, that was really helpful. Can you, do we know about how much, about how much money we're talking about with the Measure O?
It, it's $24.5, $24.5 million is what they're looking at on Monday.
So it's a significant portion of what we're planning to use for the financing of this project?
Yeah, and Carolyn, maybe you could make a couple of comments about the financing that you were looking at.
Yeah, sure. In the models that we were running, I think we were around 20 million or so, 20 to 22 million of what might be needed for something like this development. So so that allocation makes sense and is encouraging that it's going to be sized to accommodate this type of a development. And one thing I can just add to that, if that wasn't enough, is that it's very reflective of developments that are funded by the city or by localities. It's probably around, you know, $200,000 per unit is a typical local subsidy in the current market. So if you look at projects that have been funded by the city in the first tranche or by the county, or, you know, they're in that range, so it's an appropriate ask.
Do you have additional questions, President Alper?
No, I just, I guess I was just going to make a comment that, I mean, I agree with, I, I agree with the staff's recommendation and with what you said, Director Sinek. I think it's, I'm also open to other sites being possible sites for, for educator housing. And in the event that we need, in the event that our enrollment increases so much that we're at the point where we feel like we need to add our capacity for students, I think a distributed approach for, for doing that, it makes more sense to me than a distributed approach for housing. And, and it's one thing we looked at when we thought that our enrollment was going up a few years ago, where, I think it was before you, Director Kalis, but there, there are a number of, of our school sites, well, definitely Sheneta was part of them. There's a number of our school sites that, that could potentially be expanded to add more capacity for students, which, which, which I think is, makes more sense from a long-term planning perspective than distributing housing at this point, which, which, as you pointed out, would also probably lose us the Measure O funds that the city is reserving for us.
Yeah. I mean, I will also say that the school district has hovered in the 10,000 students for decades. You know, there's been ebbs and flows. A lot of the, the population growth in Berkeley has to do with the campus. The University of California, Berkeley. So again, I think we can definitely look at, I agree with you, President Alper, the student growth could be assumed by a number of our campuses, whereas housing is, is, is more limited. I think, I think there are sites we could do it, but not, not in the same scale. So do we, are we, 706, are we ready to entertain a motion? And Superintendent Stevens, did you want to chime in at all on any of this conversation?
I won't add very much. You know, I, I thought that Executive Director John Kalis did a good job of summarizing the analysis that he and I went through. I'll just reiterate that we are very appreciative, both of the quality of the presentation that Deep Mar put together for us. We had a chance to preview that presentation about a week ago. And, and we did sort of step back, spent significant amount of time looking at that presentation, going back actually and sort of reconstructing conversations about the initial site selection, reminding ourselves of why some sites were de-selected from consideration, thinking again about the difficulty of some of the propositions, like the Oregon Street location. And then finally concluding after sort of that review, that, that we were on the right track and that there were ideas here that we could carry forward into the future. So I will just, it's mainly a reiteration of what John has shared, that, that it also is, you know, syncs with my thinking as well.
Yeah. And I think Susie Marzola said during public comment, as someone who is very experienced as a, a neighbor of a school district property, I think that our current board members are, speak on behalf of President Alper and myself, is we are very committed to having an engaging process with our community. And, you know, looking at John, you know, the idea of having the design committee making sure that we've got participation. I know that the neighbors and particularly Deep Mar was very instrumental in helping to do some design in the, at the tail end of the adult school, when, you know, the district was engaging the community more than they had when they first started the adult school design. So I think we're all very committed to, to having a partnership with all of the community. And what's exciting is that there's a lot of work going on in Berkeley right now around housing and housing alternatives. So there's a lot of expertise that's, that's being developed throughout our neighborhood. So why don't we go ahead and entertain the motion, which is to propose to the school board that we select the Berkeley Adult School for the first property to look at for educator housing, and that we would, we would direct staff, we recommend to the school board that we would be directing staff to issue an RFP for a third-party developer with a long-term land lease. Is that what the motion would be?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're talking about bringing this to the board at the February 17th board meeting.
Okay, February 17th. So again, for those of you who are still on, on February 17th, this will come forward. We will also probably, there'll be time for public comment as there are in every school board meeting, and encourage folks to come back out.
And, and that RCD, you, you all will be there as well, right? That's the plan, Director Kalis?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So is there, oh, do we, the last thing was if we had any time, Executive Director Kalis, if there is any quick updates you needed to give us on anything?
There's nothing that's, that's really, there's nothing that's urgent, as we've gone over time already. If the subcommittee would like, I can give you full updates, but there's nothing, nothing urgent for right now.
Okay, and do we have a date for the next subcommittee meeting?
We do not, and I actually, I spoke with Carol today about reaching out to both of you, because what I'd like to do is schedule the meetings out for this year.
Okay, that'd be great. Okay, all right, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks to all the community members who came out tonight.
Thank you all.